Meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Escondido Planning Commission to Order. You could please rise to salute, salute.
Vice Chair Barber.
Present.
Commissioner Macaro?
Here.
Commissioner Spear? Chair Wyler?
Here.
Commissioner Stevie?
Here.
Commissioner Correll?
Here.
Commissioner Spear?
If we could move on to approval of the minutes, any comments from anyone, and would anyone like to make a motion?
We have approval of the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Barber and a second by Commissioner Camaro. Sorry. Macaro?
If we could have the vote, please.
Vice Chair Barber?
Aye.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Approve.
Commissioner Correll?
Approve.
The vote is six, zero, one absent, to approve.
Thank you. Any written communications on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
No, no communications for items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Any oral communications on any items that aren't on the agenda?
No items.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearings. The first public hearing this evening is PL twenty-three, zero, three, one, nine, and that is the Canterbury Gardens site. Staff would like to make a presentation?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Chair Wyler, Vice Chair Barber, Commissioners. My name is Veronica Camorones. I'm your city planner. I'll be presenting this item. Our consultant, Greg Mattson, is unfortunately ill, and so I will be presenting on his behalf this evening. So the request before you is a request to approve a tentative subdivision map and a condominium conversion permit for the purposes of conversion of an existing conditionally-approved apartment building with the reduction of one unit. So the project site is located within the South Center City Specific Plan, specifically within the Southern Entry District, and has a general plan land use designation of specific planning area fifteen. The zoning is specific plan area, and the current uses that are permitted include multifamily residential within the specific plan and for a for-rent product type. It is through what is called a plot plan process, which is an administrative process done at the staff level. The project site is a one-point-five-eight acre site that consists of a single parcel, and it was the applicant received approval of a major plot plan on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the construction of a forty-four-unit apartment complex. This original entitlement was for a for-rent product type. The approximate one-and-a-half acre site is surrounded by similar multifamily uses to the south, southeast, and west across South Center City Parkway with commercial uses to the north. The applicant's request is to convert the approved residential apartment project into for-sale condominium project, which requires the tentative subdivision map and the condo permit. As part of these conversions, this conversion, the applicant will provide separate utilities to each unit, washer and dryer hookups, and establish a set of covenants, codes, and restrictions for maintenance and services provided by the homeowners' association. The request before the commission is only for the subdivision of airspace for the purposes of the condominium conversion. The applicant does not propose any changes to architectural design or site design other than the reduction of one unit to accommodate a trash enclosure. Therefore, the existing site layout, landscaping, architecture, and frontage improvements are all previously approved as part of a major plot plan. For clarification purposes, in the event the commission were to deny the requested subdivision and condo conversion, the project could still be developed as a multifamily apartment project under the previously approved major plot plan. This slide depicts photos of the project site, which is currently under grading, has received grading permits for the original apartment development. The top photo is looking southeasterly toward the adjacent multifamily complex, and the bottom photo is looking north along South Escondido Boulevard. I believe there's a motel in the background, and the structure scene, yes, is a motel. So this is the site layout of the original or of the proposed design with the reduction of one unit. It's for reference only to show the commission what the proposed site design looks like or the approved site design looks like, excuse me. This, again, is a for-reference-only slide that depicts the elevations for the multifamily-approved apartment development, which would carry over for the condo conversion. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission approve the requested tentative subdivision map and condominium permit since the project is consistent with city policy and regulations as depicted and outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the environmental determination for the project. That project is exempt from CEQA, further CEQA review, and that concludes staff's presentation, and I am available to field questions.
Thank you. Before we get into questions, I just want to ask one clarifying question, and that is, the only thing that we're voting on this evening is just for the condominium, the ability to process that tentative map, not the design?
That is correct.
Okay. Vice Chair Barber?
This isn't actually going to be a question for staff, but I want to make sure that the applicant is aware that I'm going to be asking a question, because often the applicants don't come up to speak after the staff presentation, and just to let the applicant know is I very much like to see the expansion of our supply of apartment units be increased in Escondido to help meet the needs of our demographics, so I am going to be asking the applicant what the factors are that has made the applicant want to pursue a different route by converting the apartments into condominiums.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, if we could, if the applicant would like to speak, we'll go ahead and allow the applicant to speak first, and then we'll go into any other public discussion.
Good evening, my name is Scott Parker. I did want to just clarify one thing, the applicant is Kensington, Canterbury Gardens. Yeah, we have been working on this project for a few years now, and we have very much appreciated staff's help in our pursuing this project. And if I can address your question, we had always conceived this as a rental, and that was our major objective, but at the same time, at some point, we were going, we probably were going to convert it because it is more of a housing-type of project. The main reason that we shifted gears was really economics. My lender had made a commitment to me, I mean, more of a verbal commitment, just based on our numbers, of how much money they were willing to lend us, and as interest rates rose and cap rates, capitalization rates rose, the value of the project dropped, and so they were not willing any longer to lend us the amount of money they were going to. They basically said, if you still want to pursue a rental project, you need to bring in three million dollars cash to deal with. And that was not part of our business plan, and we just weren't prepared to do that. So fortunately, and I mean that sincerely, fortunately, we were able to kind of shift gears and push it towards a for-sale project. So that's the, that's really the only reason that we did it, really economically.
That's understandable, because that's an economic case, that there could be a condominium project, there's not going to be any project at all. Okay, I got you.
And of course, I'm here to answer any questions. I'm in favor of what we're possible.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go further, I'd like to ask if there were any disclosures from any other questioners? I have one. I did have the opportunity to drive by the site, and also I did speak with one of the representatives for the, for the. So at this point, if we can...
The only thing I would say about that, I live fairly close to it. Not that, I'm south of it, but not very far.
Okay.
Not that.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have any speakers?
No speakers. One written comment was received in opposition.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that all commissioners received that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Discussion from the commissioners? Anything? Can entertain your motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move approval of Resolution two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-seven to approve the project.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by, or motion by Vice Chair Barber to approve, and a second by Commissioner Correll. Any comments, discussion? All right, we can go to the vote.
Vice Chair Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes, approve.
Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Approve.
Commissioner Correll?
Approve.
The vote is six, zero, to approve.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is PL twenty-three-dash-zero-one-eight-three, which is a master plan modification and precise development plan. Presentation by staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alex Frank Geller, Assistant Planner for the City of Escondido's Planning Commission. Now we're presenting to you item PL two-three-zero-one-eight-three, a master plan modification and a precise plan for modifications and improvements to an existing auto dealership with an Escondido Auto Park. Subject property, this is addressed as nineteen-nineteen Auto Parkway, is located within the Escondido Auto Park Plan Development under the general plan land use designation of planned commercial under the plan development commercial zone. Project site is bounded at Andreessen Drive to the north and Auto Parkway to the east. It's currently surrounded by general industrial uses to the southwest and the entirety of the Escondido Auto Park to the northeast and south. As a project background for the property, the original development of the Escondido Auto Park was approved in the nineteen-eighties, establishing the auto park concept. Subject property nineteen-nineteen Auto Parkway, originally developed in nineteen-eighty-six under a precise plan developing the initial auto dealership in the location. Plan was further modified in nineteen-eighty-eight, revising said plan to include additional sales area and existing service facilities to the rear of the property. Further modifications to the site and southern property seventeen-seventeen Auto Parkway were proposed in two thousand and fourteen. These plans were approved by the planning commission, however, it's not fully constructed and the project site as location was left unsecured. The project request involves a modification to the master plan to increase the square foot included on-site and the precise plan for the physical expansion pursuant to R-19 of the Escondido zoning code. The project request involves the demolition of the existing three-thousand-square-foot single-story dealership building in order to construct a new thirteen-thousand-square-foot, thirty-foot-tall building, which includes an eighty-one-hundred square foot ground floor, the thirty-two-hundred square foot upper mezzanine, and fifteen-hundred square foot service canopy with an entry gate. The existing detached seventy-one-hundred square foot storage building and the forty-one-hundred repair base are to remain rear of the property. The auto dealership of the new construction itself would require minimum forty-two parking spaces for the place and customers. The project has been providing forty-two spaces, twenty-two which would be utilized additionally for inventory display, in addition to the seven existing patio areas that are on-site. And here, you can see the proposed site plan, which has been provided to the commission here in general position. The areas include designated the proposed expansion to the existing facility, including the service canopy, the entry gates, the northern side of the property. Access to the repair base and service areas would revitalize through that service canopy and that entry gateway. Fire access and fire turnaround access is provided in the site from Andreessen to the north with the hammerhead turnaround to the modified hammerhead for the fire department that is on the southern end of the property. And here, we can see the proposed floor plan depicting the showroom floor, the sales office, service canopy, and other mezzanine. Here, we can see the project's elevations in the greater detail. The project itself is designed similarly to other dealerships throughout the auto park, incorporating more modern and contemporary theme. The visible exterior from Auto Parkway and Andreessen Drive would incorporate bars, plaster, and walls with two white aluminum-clad wall pop-out views displaying current free tail doors. Light gray roof parapets incorporated along the front elevation, providing a distinct separation between the two. Northern elevation and service bay include light stucco finish with additional metal clad walls that are used throughout. And here, we can see the western and southern elevations of the property. The rear western elevation would utilize white decker and masonry blump, and the southern elevation is a combination of all elements of the others, including the window elements, decker, white masonry blump, and the aluminum clad. The existing repair buildings at the rear of the site would all be painted white to match the new dealership building, and additionally be blocked from most public view via the dealership and additional wall extension to the middle of the property. The Escondido Auto Park has reviewed the proposal and does recommend approval of project's design and implementation. The project has designed and conditioned for the City of Escondido, which conforms to all fire, engineering, and planning requirements subject to the approval of the master plan modification. This project qualifies under multiple exceptions under CEQA guidelines in Section one-five-three-oh-one for existing facilities, one-five-three-oh-two for replacement and reconstruction, and additionally one-five-three-oh-three for new construction for a version of small structures. In conclusion, City of Escondido's planning staff recommends the planning commission adopt PC Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four-dash-zero-nine for the approval of the project. This concludes staff's presentation. The staff and the applicant represented are present for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Well done. Before we go, disclosures on this? Anybody have any disclosures? All right, seeing none. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Spear?
Curiosity questions, I know that this fits with, as you mentioned, the planning requirements. This is a thirty-foot building that's going from single story to two-story. I do believe it's pretty consistent with the adjacent properties in the area. Is, what is the height restriction in this area? Do we have?
Height restriction is typically something around that area. The master plan doesn't really dictate exclusively the height restriction, however, it can be per-view of the project.
Yes, so our plan development process allows for developments to create flexible standards for development. In the case of the site in question, the modification to the master plan would allow for the increase in height. Typically, the master and precise development plans from the eighties have included the purview of the project as the maximum threshold identified under the plan development. So that is the request for the modification to the master plan to allow for the increase in height and the increase in area, which then the precise plan fits under.
Thank you for that. Another question I have is, is it typical for us to perform an outreach to adjacent businesses?
The city, the planning division does not have any requirements for additional outreach. We do notice all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject site. We also post within the newspaper, and then there's the physical posting on-site as well.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions of staff? If the applicant would like to speak, now would be your time, otherwise you can go on to public comment. Seeing that that can do so much. Any, any public comments?
No public comments received.
Commissioner Wyler, I actually do have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's for staff or for the applicant. I am curious about chargers, the electric chargers that have been suggested in this plan. Are they for public use, or are they just for the use of the dealership? Is this going to help in any way toward our climate action goals?
I'm trying my best. I don't, I don't know exactly those, you know, that business plan, but in their other developments, they always have some charges are designated for the service side, so you have to be a customer, and they do have some public ones that are sitting out front. They often have problems that people come in and park and not really be a customer and not really interested, just interested in the, so sometimes there's securities, and sometimes if that becomes a problem, I've seen them put credit cards. My name is Dylan Davis, I'm an architect, CCPG architect, sorry. So I don't think we've gotten that far, but there is a couple out on the sales side or out front in the customer zone, so they're not entering it as a public free-for-all, but it often is just the nature of the inviting to business outreach.
What, Chair Wyler, if I may add one additional point to Commissioner Spear's question, which is that the Auto Park does have an association, and the association did review and approve this request.
Thank you for the clarification. Any discussion? I only have a couple of words. I drive by this location quite often, and, and looking at this particular building in relationship to all the improvements that have been done throughout the, throughout the Auto Park, yeah, this one, it wasn't a dire need of a, of a base, but I like the architecture, well done. I think this would be a real nice, clean addition to the Auto Park, so, thank you. That was it, I don't have any other comments anymore. Entertained motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Spear to approve, a second from Vice Chair Barber. Let's go ahead and ask for the vote.
Vice Chair Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Approve.
Commissioner Correll?
Approve.
The vote is six, zero, to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item, and that is PL two-three, zero, oops, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. PL two-three-dash-zero-two-seven-two, that's a tentative map, tentative subdivision map and density bonus. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening once again, Veronica Camorones, city planner. Before I jump into this item, I will just, for the edification of the commission, Alex, our typical minutes clerk, and myself are presenting this evening because we've had a retirement within the planning division. Senior Planner Jay Paul has retired from the division after thirty-three years. He's currently on his vacation portion of his last bit before his formal retirement date, but as a result, the Volkswagen dealership, as well as the subdivision map for his project, so Alex and I are presenting them this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So, the request before you is a tentative subdivision map with a density bonus request located at two-twenty South Citrus. The project site is an approximately two-point-eight acre site located on the eastern side of Citrus Avenue, just south of Bear Valley, at the Bear Valley and Citrus intersection. The site has a land use designation of suburban and a zoning designation of R-dash-one-dash-ten, which is single-family residential. The suffix denotes a requirement for minimum lot sizes of ten thousand square feet within this zone and consistent with the suburban land use designation as denoted in the general plan. Immediately adjacent to the project site are single-family residential lots developed with existing residential units. Directly across Citrus is a residential rehabilitation development. Directly north of the site is a plan development with a zoning designation of plan development R-dash-three-point-three. Other surrounding land uses and zoning designations consist of the R-dash-one-dash-ten and suburban, generally to the north, south, east, and west. The project site was previously entitled in two thousand and seventeen for an eight-lot subdivision that is still valid. The previous approval included lot sizes consistent with the city's maximum density for the site and minimum lot sizes. The prior approval did not involve a density bonus request, and it is similar in layout and street design as what is proposed in the current request before you this evening, as shown on this slide. Tonight's request entails approval of a residential subdivision with a density bonus to allow fourteen residential lots. The proposed project's lot sizes range from approximately forty-one-hundred square feet to seventy-nine-hundred square feet. This request includes two lettered lots, which would be maintained by a future homeowners' association, which is a required condition of approval and consists of the private road and stormwater facility for the project. This slide depicts the proposed map design. The red outlined lot is the lot identified for deed restriction for affordability purposes in compliance with density bonus requirements. Conditions of approval require the applicant record an affordable housing agreement with the city for purposes of restricting the unit for very low-income households. Green outlined lot is the proposed stormwater basin, which would be maintained by the HOA. The project would maintain access from Citrus Avenue and retain a very similar layout of street design as the previously approved eight-lot subdivision. A private access easement would provide access to lots eight through eleven located at the north of the site. The proposed project includes a density bonus request, which allows for additional density pursuant to state law and state and local regulations. Under the proposed density bonus project, the requested density is four-point-eight-seven dwelling units per acre, where permitted density is three-point-three dwelling units per acre under the suburban land use designation. When density bonus is invoked, the applicant may be entitled to certain incentives and concessions, as well as waivers from development standards. For the purposes of this project, the applicant has not requested waivers of those R-one standards pertaining to maximum heightened stories, parking, lot coverage, and floor area ratio. Therefore, upon future review of architectural design, such R-one regulations would apply. Additionally, you will note that the proposed project does not include architectural design of units associated with the subdivision. Condition of approval E-four requires the applicant to come back through the planning division for a design review associated with the future unit designs and plotting to ensure they conform with city requirements and the project requirements. As mentioned previously, density bonus may entitle an applicant to a certain number of incentives and concessions, as well as an unlimited number of waivers from development standards. These can be viewed as two separate categories of requests. For the incentives and concessions, these are requests to reduce or modify site development standards, code requirements, or other regulatory requirements which result in cost reductions. In comparison, a waiver of a development standard, in other words, the second category, is a waiver of a standard that physically precludes the construction of the project at the density proposed. The number of incentives concessions a project may request is based on the proposed percentage of affordable units and their affordability level, which is defined in state law and adopted by the city under Article sixty-seven of the Escondido zoning code. Development waivers are not limited to a maximum number, but again, are those that would physically preclude the project's construction. Attachment two of your staff report outlines the requested waivers and the justification presented for them. It also lists the... It also lists the requirement in the Escondido zoning code that is expressly being waived or modified. In total, the applicant requests seven waivers and is not requesting to use any of the incentives concessions of which they may request up to two. As you can see on this slide, the requested waivers are reductions in the minimum lot size, lot width and street frontage requirements. They also request reductions in required setbacks for both the future units and the fences and walls as well as a reduction in the number of street trees that would be required. Finally, they are also requesting an increase in the allowable height of the fences and walls within the street side yard setback of Lot One, which is the Citrus fronting lot, and a waiver of the discretionary determination for a grading exemption pursuant to Article fifty five. This slide illustrates the fences and walls associated with the project. The northeastern property boundary would result in fill to the site to ensure proper drainage and require a continuous retaining wall that varies in height slightly with a maximum exposed height of approximately six feet. As you can see at this section detail shown in yellow, there would be an approximate one foot setback from back of wall face to the front of the proposed fence. In the second section detail, which consists of two sections, E and F, there are instances where the proposed fence and wall would be one unbroken plane and be upwards of 12 feet in height. Finally, you will note that at the southeastern edge of the project site, the retaining wall exposed would be within allowable heights at approximately 18 inches and a fence set roughly at prop, a fence set roughly at the property line of six feet in height. Overall, the proposed project is consistent with the intent of the general plan. The proposed subdivision is requested, is requesting to subdivide an existing lot into 14 residential lots for single-family development, which is consistent with the suburban land use designation as shown in the land use and community form chapter of the general plan. Future units of the project would be required to conform to the building heights within the R1 zone, which are in line and consistent with those denoted within the suburban designation in the land use element. Further, the project aligns with Goals Three and Four of the land use chapter, which aim to provide a variety of housing types and densities within neighborhoods. Here, the project entails single-family lots that provide for a deed restricted affordable unit of very low income. Condition number E four would ensure that the future design of those units complies with the R1 standards except for those subject to the density bonus waivers. Further, conditions of approval require a project-specific homeowners association for maintenance of the private street and the stormwater basin, including landscaping. This will ensure the project is well-maintained. Additionally, the project is generally consistent with other patterns of development within the surrounding area. As you can see on this slide, there are two previously approved projects within the vicinity of the site that were approved at densities higher than the proposed project. To the northeast is a planned development of attached townhomes that was developed at approximately 6.89 dwelling units per acre. To the east of the site is a single-family development approved at approximately 5.08 dwelling units per acre. It should be noted that both of these developments were approved under different entitlements and zoning regulations than what may be in effect now. This slide is meant to provide context of the general vicinity to show that developments of varying density have been approved and therefore the proposed project is consistent with surrounding patterns of development. Finally, the project is consistent with the city's recently certified housing element, specifically Goal Two, which seeks to provide a range of housing opportunities for all income groups as well as policies two point one through, two point three as shown here. The project would support the city in achieving additional future units towards our regional housing need requirement, provide a deed restricted affordable unit for very low income household and provide for additional owner, homeownership opportunities in the event of future sale by the applicant. The proposed project was noticed pursuant to state and local regulations. All property owners were noticed within a 500-foot radius of the project site. Uh, the project notice was placed in the Times Advocate up to 10 days prior to the, to tonight's meeting and the notice of public hearing sign was posted onsite up to 10 days prior to tonight's meeting. Since the publishing of your agenda packets, we have received two public comments, which were forwarded to the commission, both digitally and have been provided on the dais for you. Both comments were in favor of the project. With that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the categorical exemption for the project under SEQA and adopt resolution 2024 oh eight approving the tentative subdivision map and the density bonus request. That concludes staff's presentation and I am available for questions. The applicant and their team are also here and available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any disclosures on this item?
Excuse me. I not only live on Citrus Avenue, I live two tenths of a mile from the subject property, but I do not feel that there's anything regarding this project that might impact or prejudice me in any way.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for staff?
So that, I mean, to be honest with you, there are some things that I, that I'm not completely comfortable with, but they're really irrelevant because under the status of law, we don't have that much latitude in what we condition to prove. I am a little interested if the engineering department could, I know near that intersection, the project is very near the intersection of Bear Valley Park with Citrus, especially in commute, uh, work commute times and the student commute times for the two schools there. Traffic can be a bit of a logjam in this section, how this project might impact that or for that matter, how that traffic might impact the project. The future residents are going to be trying to enter Citrus Avenue against the lineup traffic that I often see there.
Um, yeah, the project, uh, screened out pretty early in the, in the traffic. We have a scoping agreement and at 14 units, it screened out for vehicle miles traveled, which is the SEQA standard and also for, um, level of service. It doesn't quite, you know, it doesn't put enough trips in the peak hour on those roadways to have required a full, uh, traffic impact study. The, uh, the project is widening their frontage to local collector standard. It doesn't really, you know, widen the overall street, but, uh, you know, it does provide additional site distance and, and, um, allowing cars to enter the flow of traffic. The, uh, the project also, you know, improves their frontage with sidewalk, which should help with the, the school, the pedestrian and school, uh, children walking.
My biggest concern regarding this project is not necessarily the proposed development itself. My concern is there's an existing, uh, unit on the property with a family that's currently residing there as renters and that building is going to be demolished and they're going to need to relocate. So I'd like to discuss with staff. Um, I know under SB three thirty that there are conditions that the applicant would be required to help the tenant with relocation expenses. And I was wondering if staff could please, uh, explain that in depth for the planning commission.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Barber. So as Vice Chair Barber noted, there is a state law. It's referred to as Senate Bill three thirty, but it is a section within the government code that I'm sure Dare knows and I do not off the top of my head, um, that stipulates several things regarding housing developments within the state of California, one of which is relocation assistance for certain qualifying units that are termed protected units. These are deed restricted units, so if a unit is subject to an affordability covenant, that's a protected unit. If the unit is subject to certain tenant protections at certain levels, that's a protected unit. In the, the most common instance that we face in the city of Escondido is if the unit is occupied by a low-income household and the income threshold is, uh, set by the state of California, set by the housing, community and housing, State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and we would require that an applicant that has an existing residential unit provide information on household size and household income to determine whether they are a qualifying household and therefore a protected unit. For this project, the applicant has provided income information and householding, household size information and staff are working to determine whether the unit would be protected.
And in what means would the applicant, if the, if the residents qualify, if they meet the criteria of this, how would relocation expenses be assisted? Dare?
Do you want to take that?
Well, I would defer to Dare if she would like to correct me, but essentially we would evaluate and work with the applicant to ensure they fulfill the requirements of SB three thirty. Um, that would be a combination effort between our housing division, which is not present this evening, but a separate division that works with deed restricted units, et cetera. The city attorney's office to ensure compliance with that law and then the project planner um, to ensure that is the case since.
My, my question is more related to, does the applicant help, help with moving expenses?
So I can, I can add to that if, if that's helpful, Veronica. Yeah, so what SB three thirty requires is, um, just to back up a little bit, even if the home is not, doesn't fall within the definition of protected unit, every, um, at a minimum, any resident, um, needs to be allowed to remain in their unit until six months before the start of construction activities. That's protection every, anyone supported. And they also must be allowed to return to the prior rental rate if the demolition does not proceed and the property is returned to the rental market. So that applies to everyone who's, uh, needs to relocate. But if they've also fallen to the definition of a protected unit, then, um, the relocation benefits that they're entitled to include, um, the developer must provide state relocation benefits, including moving expenses and these are all defined by statute, but moving, they include things like moving expenses, relocation assistance and payment of the difference, if any, between the affordable rate rent and the rent for a comparable unit for up to 42 months. Those are all included in Department of Government Code.
Thank you. And also under SB three thirty, um, doesn't the existing tenant have first right of refusal or future of loan, um, unit is moving on this project?
Um, yes, that is also.
Thank you, I wanted to add on the reminder.
As a follow-up to that, because that was an excellent question, Vice Chair. Because it's in statute, do we have to place that as a condition upon this project to make sure that this is kind of at the forefront, that as a reminder?
Yeah, um, it's not necessary because it is, um, a requirement in state law. If the commission wanted to, you know, certainly do that, um, just as an added protection, but it is something that the city will make sure is complied with.
What's, what's the fail safe on this? So if, at what point is there a determination and does that, and you may have answered that already, but at what point is the applicant, applicant notified and says, look, you've got to follow all of this, so you probably better get started now, um, to prepare for it, but where's the fail safe in all of that?
That's a good question. I'm actually going to see if Veronica can answer that because that's more of a staff-related question.
Yes, so as we navigate all the new housing laws, we are working to identify where those fail safes would be. We would work with the applicant at every stage of what typically is seen as a trigger, prior to grading permit issuance, prior to building permit issuance, prior to occupancy, we'd be working. And at the bare minimum, it would be prior to occupancy, prior to release of those permits. What the commission could condition is that trigger mechanism, is that release component associated with the state statute. So setting a timeframe essentially on when the applicant would provide that information to staff.
When would an appropriate time be? And, and forgive me because I just, I haven't seen a condition like this before, so it's got a little bit of brand, brand new for us. That's why I said the question was excellent.
Speak about what I'm considering. I don't know if this is the right time to do it, but if this, if there's going to be a motion to approve this project, I would want to condition it that the applicant must reach full compliance with SB three thirty within 45 days of the effective date of the map.
I think we'll hold that at least until we get to the motion portion or, or we can have a discussion on that and we'll have that discussion. I think after the applicant has had a chance to give their presentation, the publicist spoke and then I think we can kind of have that discussion if you would like to hold off.
In fact, there was a moment that maybe someone should throw some, some direction in there.
And there is also the, the trigger of prior to demolition permit being issued.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions of staff? I have one. With the, with the number of, of waivers that are being requested, um, is, is there a limit or by statute they can request a num, an unlimited number in order to demonstrate that those are cost-saving factors in order to provide the, the affordable?
So the, the waivers of the development standards are associated with the physical precludence of the project construction. So there is an unlimited limit, so to speak. However, that does not equate to they are able to obtain an unlimited amount. They can request however many they may need in order to justify the construction of the project at the density proposed and then they do provide the city with justification as to why that necessitates the physical construction of the project itself. So the city, city staff do evaluate for whether that request for a waiver actually is needed to physically ensure the project can come to fruition.
Okay, thank you. Um, actually, one other question. If you could bring up the slide that showed the walls, uh, the cross-section of the walls and under section DD, so the way this one, where is section DD? So that's, um, on that northern side. The only, and it's a minor concern, but it does happen. So there's a gap, essentially a one-foot gap between the new fence and the wall. What happens in that gap area? Is that going to be filled with gravel and with a weed barrier or something so that we're not adding to the maintenance by the person adjacent to the property? I mean, is there something that goes in there to kind of make sure that, you know, weeds and stuff are collected in there?
There is no condition expressly pointing to that one-foot gap. However, they would go through the landscape plan check process. We would be looking at permeable areas that are not proposed to be infilled with any sort of concrete or, or hardscape and assess for how they're addressing that to comply with landscape requirements.
Okay. All right, that was just kind of a concern there. Um, I'll hold my comments for later, that was the worst. Yes, Commissioner Stevie?
I had a question about the increase in density here. Was there a, a reason given for wanting to increase it from the pre-approved, I believe it was eight units? Is that correct? Eight, eight lots to the 14?
As I was not the project planner on this, I will defer to the applicant if they would like to answer that question.
Maybe, maybe concurrent to that, as you're speaking to it, uh, was there any additional sort of study or work done to determine if adding these units was going to impact like schools or some of the other resources around that would be impacted by the increase?
Good evening, thanks for having us. My name is Stevie Yaskar, um, from our property team, uh, developer, building contractor. Um, we do have, uh, other members of the team here, if you're property owner, um, if you're a member of the engineering design team. So, you know, as other questions come up, just, you know, those resources are, are available. Um, the, speaking to the question, um, the eight lot subdivision previous approval was in 2017 and after, that was before our, our team was specifically involved in the project. It's just a property in the current team. And at that time, you know, once the approvals were secured, started working on the engineering and working towards, you know, what the. and working towards, you know, projects. It was a very big project. It was, it was, at that time, 2017, 18, costs were starting to increase. And then we started working with the property owner, and that was around, I would say, 2020. And COVID hit, and, you know, things got weirder than that. Costs went crazy. So, you know, from, as long as we've been involved with the project, it was trying to find a way to basically provide a feasible, feasible project there. And so we looked at a lot of different opportunities, and the, the density bonus provided an opportunity to, really to help create some additional value that could offset the truly fixed costs of the, the street didn't change. Some of the grading did change, and so those were, were a way to, a way to not only provide an affordable housing opportunity, but also to make the projects that it could be feasible to have.
Any other questions of the applicant? I, I have one. Same question I asked staff, which is, you know, there's like a gap between the fence and the wall that faces kind of the adjacent property owner. Any, what are your thoughts on putting some sort of barrier in there to make sure weeds and such don't collect?
Yeah, no, because that's a great idea. I think staff's kind of, you know, working with the, with the landscape. I remember viewers, our landscape, our, we haven't made it to that point yet, but yeah, definitely, it's in our, in our interest to make sure that we make this on either side of the property line. Is that, you know, at an efficient level?
Okay. Hang on just a second. Ms. Berns, did you have a comment?
I was going to answer the second question that Commissioner Stevie had, had posed about studies regarding potential impacts to schools. And the short answer is no. However, a noise study was prepared to ensure the project complies with general plan requirements for interior noise levels of the proposed residential units.
Question I do have, and this is related to Lot 10, understanding that that's the affordable site. So when you provide that affordable unit, it, it gives you the ability to ask for a whole lot of waivers and such. But I think one of the intents of the density bonus is when these units are proposed, that they really should fit into the community and not be something that is, those are the units that are for the affordable housing. When I look at this, I see that Lot 10 is, you know, significantly smaller than the rest of the lots. At, I mean, it says 40, 4,500 square feet, but the usable area is probably right around 4,000 square feet. So therein lies my concern, is you are getting the benefit of a lot of waivers, but we're getting, we have a lot here that's significantly smaller than the others. Is there a way that we can widen that lot out, which would encroach into Lot 11, and still not preclude Lot 11 from building a home that would be appropriate for that particular lot? And I know this is putting you on the spot right here, but, you know, these are my concerns, especially when it comes to affordable housing.
Yeah, the challenge with Lot 11 is, you know, Lot 11 looks larger because of the shape of it. You're challenged by being the setbacks and being the driveway, driveway distances that are required for parking in the driveway, providing usable yard space. And so that's really the constraint on, on Lot 11, being able to kind of play with the size there. In addition to trying to, you know, create efficiency in design and, you know, our goal is to have, we don't want to have a different plant type for each lot, because that, you know, we try and create some, there will stagger them and provide different elevation on trees, but when we, when we kind of plot it these, you know, the goal is to really try and, you know, create some efficiencies in the lot design, urban, in, you know, urban design, so.
So the unit that you would propose on Lot 10, the actual home, would essentially look the same as, I don't know, let's go over and down a lot, it'd look the same as Lot 8? Let's just say.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So if you drove up and you looked at the house and go, oh yeah, that looks like the three that are down the street?
Yes.
So all of these units that are going to be proposed, and granted, that's not what we're reviewing tonight, that it's going to be staff at some point in the future, pretty skinny homes. So I'm, I'm a little skeptical just because it just, I'm just having a tough time with that Lot 10. But if we can be assured, staff's going to review this, that that unit that's on Lot 10 is going to be the same one as two or three of the others that are coming through, all right, that helps me a little bit. I, I don't have any other questions, staff? Commissioner? Commissioner Spear?
This may, this may actually be a staff question, but my question is, with the, with waivers, if I understand correctly, the waivers are unlimited with the caveat that they are waivers for anything that would preclude the construction, is that correct? And that those presented to staff, and staff would then review those to, review the consistency with that requirement, the provision requirement? Much of these makes sense to me when you talk about lot size, lot width. In order to get the density, that, that's inherently obvious. When we talk about a, well, for example, a reduction in trees, how is that? I'm curious what the rationale is for reduction in trees in terms of precluding the construction?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Spear. Essentially, we have a street tree requirement that is one tree per 30, 30 linear front, feet of frontage for single-family residential. A lot of times, underground utilities can eliminate various areas where a tree can be planted, and even proximity to those utilities, how close a tree can be planted. So given the level of undergrounding utilities, coupled with that requirement, there has been a restriction, so to speak, in where trees can actually go in, which is why there's been an effort to try and maybe cluster a little bit more, rather than one, distribute them more evenly, and then also, that ultimately reduces the number as well.
The waiver was a clustering rather than a reduction, is that correct?
It's a reduction, but as part of an effort to get as many trees as possible, there is a clustering proposed.
Thank you for that. I'm just, I'm just going to comment to the applicant since Steve is standing there. I, I really respect you for not seeking the concessions. Those concessions is what causes staff anxiety, costs the city money. You're unique, and I want to tell you I respect you for that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Any speakers on this item?
No requests to speak, however, five registered positions against the project.
Okay, thank you.
What do you mean no requests to speak? Is that from us?
Yeah, if, if you would like to address the planning commission, all you need to do is allow the speaker slip.
Ready? You said don't check a box if you want to.
No, I'm sorry. I was referring to the box of, if someone didn't want to speak, they could check the box to not speak and register their opinion. So if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I didn't want to.
Okay. Yeah, if you just state your name, and then you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Jesse Driver, and I'm, I'm quick, but if you go over, first of all, that's a lot that is north of the project is, there's a lot of, and the owner wants to make sure that there's no issues, he's got to build a well that is on the project lot to do the building. And he's worried that if his opponent fills it, he's not going to have water. Or with his property, his grass that he's had for 30, over, over 30 years. Then he's got an issue with flooding when they build these. If he hasn't been flooded, how are we going to build the drainage and all that? The drainage and all that, he's worried about flooding. So, so just want to raise that up. The elevation paths, the paths are raised, so like, I looked at the new deal, so I was talking to Ron earlier, and the elevations have changed due to the drainage canal, they couldn't tighten it because of something, right? And, and that was, so raises the lot higher. So the lots, the soil is not going to be the same elevation like all of us, so. And the drainage culvert, wherever it is, who's going to maintain? You guys say there's a huge, so hopefully they will, that will be the rules to maintain that. Bad traffic. David was talking about bad traffic, there's already bad traffic. So if you have 14 homes, and let's say there's two, you know, two in the driveway and two in the driveway, that's four cars, so that's a lot of vehicles maybe coming out of there. So if they have any more people, vehicles that are driving, they're going to be parked across the street about all the time. That's really the only place for him to have business, unless they lock his driver, or pull up, and he only has like two in the driveway, else they go through his gate in the back. So parking is an issue with him. With that, he was upset that, hey, now it's 14. So that's definitely more people right around. Then, uh, the plan that you required, like, so you're talking about, obviously you're saying they're reducing, okay, whatever. So the reason with eight lots before now 14 because of the, you make it small, right? Make it a lot smaller, so you can fit more houses up, because you're not doing the $10 square foot recommendation of, that's what he was going on. 34 seconds. And then SD, let's see, if they're buying, it's parking, it's, it's, like, so it's not like a group, it's like, he's doing the street. So like, is the city requiring this, has to do this, to go ahead and go over very far all the way up to Reese where there's, it's blocked? They're going to have 14 homes with families, and maybe it helps, helps the community out with even the whole entire sidewalk, all the way up to this, this. Tighten the sewer, we're doing, now we're going to put in the front street, not far by the reason of that. Do they, do they redo the entire street or just where they dig the entrance to tighten the sewer? Are they going to require to, to repave their whole entrance or front area across the street? Or is it just going to be a patch out that's going to fail eventually?
Mr. Gerger, if you could wrap it up?
Yes, one other thing is, on the SB 330, you may have all of us mentioned, there's, if he's, the applicant has informed you of their income and all that, there's like 20 people that, that has called the city, and they don't respond, and there's some of them are living in the garage, and they're tied into the, whatever they're tying into, and they're digging with the adjacent ground. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr., Mr. Tunnel, there was just a couple of brief questions there, if you might be able to provide an answer. There was a filling of the well, potential for flooding, and the raised elevations, and then drainage culvert maintenance, as well as foundation.
Okay. The, we'll start with the well. I, yeah, I believe the project does have a well on, on it. And, so any, any abandonment of a well, any abandonment of a well requires the county health department oversight, and so they would be overseeing that. And so if there's a well on the adjacent property, they would be, you know, aware of that. As far as the paving, the project is, you know, is doing full structural paving on their frontage. They are not required, you know, per municipal code to, to do street improvements down the street and off-site. So they'll be doing their, their widening, which is with, like I said, full structural paving, and overlay is needed to cover any trench patching that goes on with their project. And so they are bringing the sewer up citrus to their project, and they were correct in that the, the depth of the sewer is a contributing factor to the pad heights. It's not the only one, the drainage, making the drainage able to go out into the channel behind. And so the project is, right now, you have the channel, a walled channel, which effectively is acting as a levee. And so right now, the drainage from this property, to get to the nearest inlet to the system, it has to flow across the adjoining westerly and northerly properties. This project, by raising their site, their project will drain directly to the channel. So there actually should be less drainage going on the neighboring properties. The, what was the other? I think I'm missing something.
Maintenance of the culvert?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. The existing channel behind is already city-maintained, but yeah, any onsite drainage facilities, including their basin, and any of the perimeter brow ditches or drains are, will be the HOA's maintenance responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
Matthew Marscola?
Good evening. My name is Mattner Schulow. I am a resident of Meadowlark Lane, which is the adjacent cul-de-sac that goes into Lot, right there, about Lot 12 and 13, I believe, is where it ends up. So we purchased a home in 2016, with the understanding that any, any building on that property, if anyone was to purchase the property, it would be single-story. And to go to multi-story homes would really have an impact on our privacy. That's the home right there, the, as I looked at the screen, the bottom right corner of the yellow of the allotted land there, that you're, or the proposed property there. So not only would have an impact on our privacy, especially now that I understand they're actually building up, but it would also have an impact on the noise. And while I, you have some concerns about the storm drain, that's also adjacent to our property, as a matter of fact, because it needs to, under our property, with that kind of storm drain. And when we have a good rain event, it, it fills up, it works as it should, but it definitely fills up quick, and I just don't know what that impact would be of the additional 14 homes created into that. So there's the noise, there's the privacy of just being elevated homes, being able to look into our back there, which we really enjoy our privacy enough in that home, and of course, the impact of the storm drain.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Tunnel, let me ask you this. Anytime a new development is built, the stormwater that accumulates on that site has to be retained and let off-site at the same rate as its, as its natural state as it is today, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the basin that the project will build is doing two things. It's treating the water, but it's also detaining peak flows back to pre-project or potentially even lower than project, or pre-project. So that's how that concern is being handled.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have a question about that. What is the recourse for the homeowners adjacent to this project if that basin isn't maintained? If it becomes overgrown with trees or other, you know, plants that cause the water not to drain as intended?
Yeah, being a, being a stormwater basin, the project will, in their final engineering, will process a stormwater will, uh, process a stormwater, uh, quality, uh, plan. And with that, they will also, uh, sign, um, a stormwater basin, or it's a stormwater qua, uh, stormwater control facility maintenance agreement, um, which does get recorded. And the city is, you know, we're not even the, the, the last governing body. The re, the, the regional state water quality control board oversees us. So we're answerable to them, and so we do, uh, inspect these sites. And with the recorded agreement, you know, we do have, um, you know, more, um, control of these basins.
And then I have one more question with respect to the privacy concerns. Uh, and I don't know if this is a question for the staffer, but my question is, when these concerns are raised, and this makes sense, right? If someone buys a property, they're expecting to be single story, now you're raising the elevation, and then you've got two stories. You're creating a watchtower effect. Um, what does the city have as, you know, an opportunity for these people to gain privacy? Like, are there, uh, say, privacy hedges that can be required, or something along those lines, to ensure the privacy of the neighbors?
So, thank you for that question, Commissioner Stevie. We do not have regulations that protect privacy or private views, um, within the city. Some jurisdictions, like Delmar, Laguna Beach, do have private view protections that require such regulations. Our municipal code permits for grading to take place at the rates proposed, and actually, in addition to the, um, cut and fill quantities proposed, through certain processes, such as grading exemptions. Um, the general plan land use designation within the general plan does expressly state the building height for the R dash one dash ten and, which is the zoning over the suburban land use designation, um, of the two stories maximum thirty-five feet in height. So that is a allowed requirement pursuant to our governing policy document.
Any other questions, the staff, before we move on to the next speaker?
Just to clarify a question. So basically, what you just said was, it was already zoned for a two-story building?
So in two thousand and twelve, this area, I believe, was re-designated to the suburban, um, land use designation, and since then, it has permitted for that height, yes.
Uh, any other speakers?
Dennis Jorgensen?
My name is Dennis Jorgensen, and I own the property to the south, holding half of Citrus, three ways south of Citrus. I've owned it for fifty years. This whole point drainage is my big thing. The city, when they built the track homes in the back, they put about five foot of water or dirt from that existing, where it used to be a dairy, onto the property that we're talking about. And I've always had water problems in the back, especially like these last two years. And I've got a well at the back. I just want to have this on record, that if that is built up, I get the water from Wolf Hill all the way down to my property. And this is going to stop a little culvert to the back piece might help, but I'm worried about the water study. You can't drive back there like after the straining. I did put some base in there, and I walked the property. We have a nursery in there, so it was, uh, not the problem, but by doing this, I just want to be assured that out of all those homes, there's probably twenty acres from Wolf Hill down that all come to my piece of property and to this piece of property. And a lot of, and into that culvert coming in from underground in the back. I just want to have it on record that, uh, and then I have a question at the gate. I had, just saw the plan, I didn't realize it before, but, uh, in the front, if there's two-story one house, it is up front right along Citrus. And where there's going to be a fence, it's the street that goes right up to my property, there will be no houses. I just want to know who's going to take care of that piece of, uh, property that's, that goes all the way back there on the, this side, on the south side? And where the water piece is going to be taken off? I don't know how it's going to be taken out through that street or a small, small culvert at one point? Because that whole piece is very low. I just wanted to have it on record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The cross section that was just brought up, that does show that there is a, a brow ditch along that, uh, I guess that'd be the southern property line. The intent of that is to carry, what, any water that would be naturally flowing, um, towards the north, and then would push it to the east?
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, that's there to, yeah, intercept and convey water coming from the north. Um, and in final engineering, we'll, you know, we'll definitely look, um, you know, closer at, um, both the quantity and, and, uh, and the conveyance that needs to be built to make sure that, uh, peak flows are conveyed off, you know. Well, ba- basically, they're allowed to continue in the direction they, they did historically.
Okay, thank you, because, um, yes, with the, uh, with the adjacent property owner, Mr. Jorgensen, uh, bringing that to our attention and what goes on in the Altera. In the real world, um, we just want to make sure we don't make any of those. Uh, Commissioner?
I, I'm trying to understand the nature of the concern. And, um, from what was spoken previously, we're saying, look, the water that lands on this lot is taken care of at or better than it was before. I think the nature, if I interpret this correctly, the nature of the concern is water not on the property that would flow through this property potentially and land onto the neighboring property. Is that what we're talking about, or am I misconstruing the concern?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can speak entirely to the concern.
Sure.
But I can just say what, as, uh, you know, the level of care that we, in our review and, and the engineer that's, you know, on the design team would, would, would have, is that the project itself, you know, does not generate a larger peak flow, you know, in the, in the design storm. But it also would not block, uh, the path of historical flows from offsite that, you know. So if it, it either can convey it as it did, or it needs to intercept it and convey it, uh, to where it historically has gone.
So when they look at that project, for example, and they say, well, we're raising the lot, we're raising pad elevations, they're looking at the impact of that on flows from offsite, I assume? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. If, yeah, at the tentative level, you know, we, we look at topo as much as we can. It's typically flown topo at that point. Um, but in final engineering, we'll, you know, as needed, ask for, uh, hard shots topo to, to see that we're not, uh, blocking, you know, drainage.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay. Um, discussion among planning commissioners? Anyone want to go?
Just to explain to, uh, at least one of the citizens who was going to, brought up their concerns about the, uh, how it got from eight units on ten thousand square foot lots to fourteen units on some lots being forty-two hundred square feet. It's, uh, state law, or state goal is to try to pursue more low-income housing in a community. And they've, the state has adopted the density bonus law that if a property owner slash developer was set aside ten percent of their units for low-income households, in this case, that would be one unit, they're allowed to have automatically a density increase, uh, a number of units, and in this case, it's fourteen. And state law does not give us the latitude to, to adjust that, to make even additional conditions. But, well, we're, we're not even allowed to deny a project that falls under the, uh, this density bonus privilege. Am I correct, unless?
I'm just going to qualify that a little bit, because there is, there is a, a standard under which you could deny the project, but let me tell you what that is.
And then if they, they have to, perhaps?
Because we have a couple of new commissioners too, so I think it's important that everybody understand that the standard. Um, so if, if the commission wanted to deny the project because it is a density bonus project, the, um, commission would have to make written findings, um, based on the preponderance of the evidence that the housing development as proposed would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, unless the project is denied or approved, um, on the condition that it be developed at a low density.
Right, that's what I was going to say, but not as much wording as our articulate today. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, and I thank my partner for adding better clarification.
Any other comments?
I have one.
No, I'm, I'm sorry that you've already had your time to speak. We're now in our commission deliberations. Um, any other comments? Any discussion? Um, you know, the only comment I've got is, uh, you know, of course, any, anytime that there's a state density bonus, um, being proposed in a project, yeah, it becomes a little difficult. Um, just because it's, uh, you know, going outside what is the normal, uh, meaning all the normal zoning requirements. And the vice chair spelled it out, um, very well, uh, much better than I was going to, but, uh, thank you. And then, of course, Derek, he clarified it all the way. Um, I, you know, I'm still concerned with lot ten. Uh, you know, I just, I just think that it's, uh, you know, a little small. Regardless, um, there were no concessions being asked. Uh, so, you know, we're, our hands are tied a little bit on this. Um, so at this point, I don't have any other comments. Commissioner Stevie?
Yeah, I just have a question about what is actually lot A? Because, and I, I don't, I want to make sure I get your, Jorgensen? Jorgensen? Uh, it, he had a question about who's going to be maintaining, basically, that, you know, all of the shrubbery, et cetera, along that fence line. There's also going to be the drainage there. Is that bound up in lot A? Is the drainage and the, and the landscaping, et cetera, bound up in lot A? Or is lot A only the road, and there's no actual person responsible or organization responsible for that?
Yeah, I can answer that. Uh, lot A is, comprises the, the road and the, the narrow strip of landscaping, um, along the south boundary that kind of widens out a little bit there, uh, as you approach the, the knuckle. And, uh, as well, and so lot B is the basin. And, um, the HOA, uh, in the conditions of approval, I think both engineering and planning have engi, uh, conditions of approval, uh, stipulating what the HOA is to maintain. And, and so it is all those areas, the roadway itself, the landscaping, uh, the frontage landscaping along citrus, uh, it, and the basin, yeah, and the basin for sure.
Okay, um, and I saw that Mr. Garber has already left. Uh, there was one item, our item that he brought up, which was parking. Um, yeah, you've got two in the garage, two in the driveway, and then there's twenty actually on the street. And it's kind of shaded back, but there are even twenty parking spaces that are designated to be, uh, you know, allowed to be on the street. There's plenty of parking, in my opinion. I don't see that anybody will be, uh, going offsite, unless they don't park in the garage. But that's another. Any, any other comments, questions, entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two zero two four zero eight, with the added condition that the applicant must reach full compliance with SB three thirty within forty-five days of the effective date of the map.
If we could just have a brief discussion on that and make sure that the forty-five day time limit is appropriate?
I think staff would request clarification on compliance. What that means is it that the applicant shall provide the required information for the household income, the household size, and provide the city with adequate information to determine the status of the unit, and then, or does it also include coming to an agreement or whatever it is our city attorney's office provides direction on regarding the relocation benefits, if applicable? Um, having some sort of explanation on what compliance is would be extremely helpful for that forty-five day time limit. And then just also clarifying the tentative map effective date or the final map effective date.
If, if we limited it to the information being provided to staff, how long would they have to follow through with the rest of, of providing the, if, that would be provided to the tenant or the existing resident?
That could be built into the condition. You could provide a secondary trigger, such as, say, the demolition permit issuance for the single-family residents on site.
So you're suggesting you prefer the, tied to the demolition permit as opposed to putting a time limit of forty-five days?
I was suggesting you could potentially do both. You could say that they are to provide the household size and income information to the satisfaction of our city attorney's office for the purposes of determining whether the unit is a qualified unit, a protected unit, within forty-five days of the effective date. That's, um, nominal information that they can find and provide us within forty-five days. And then the established process of, should they be a protected unit? What that looks like, as this is one of the first projects we'll be dealing with, um, and the state laws. Tying that compliance for providing our city attorney's office and our housing division adequate justification of the relocation assistance, if applicable, tying that to the demolition permit. That's just a potential trigger you could tie it to.
And if I tied it to the tentative map, is that a sufficient time, or do you prefer final map?
Forty-five days from tentative map is satisfactory.
So if you're waiting for further comment on me, then yes, I would agree to making it, uh, forty-five days of the tentative map to provide the staff with the information that was just outlined, and then to provide regarding the, um, the protective unit and additional information at the time of the demolition permit.
If we could, Ms. Maroney, just read it back so that we're all understanding what the motion is and the added condition?
I just explained it to you.
So I believe Vice Chair Barber has motioned to approve with an added condition that would state, within forty-five days of the effective date of the tentative map's approval, the applicant shall provide to the satisfaction of our city attorney's office information to determine whether the existing single-family residential unit on site qualifies as a protected unit under Senate Bill three thirty. And in the event that the unit does qualify as a protected unit, prior to the issuance of the demolition permit for said single-family residential unit, they would provide information on the required relocation assistance stipulated within Senate Bill three thirty to staff, to the satisfaction of our city attorney's office and our housing division. Tried to say that as slow as I can.
Yeah, there's the condition. Yes, there's the condition, and I just feel more comfortable that that helps protect this family. this family that's currently there. I hate to see we're going through all this to provide a new low-income housing unit for a family expensive with the current low-income families suddenly becoming homeless. So I want to make sure that they're protected during this process.
Yeah, and I kind of look at it as just a reminder to follow the law.
Yes. And I know they will because I respect him.
Will you take one comment or test?
No, I think, I think that if there's a disagreement with the condition that's been prepared... Vice Chair Barber, do you have a problem with hearing from the applicant regarding the motion? Or can we even do that? Because we sort of closed public testimony.
Yeah, I think you sort of forgot to exactly close the public hearing portion. So I think it's up to the discretion of the chair if you'd like to hear from the applicant or not.
My feeling on this is really the condition, the intent of the condition is to make sure that the reminder's there that the applicant follows state law. I think that's really what we're trying to do and place some time limits upon that.
Yeah, we're not really creating a new burden on the applicant. We're just reminding, this is what has to be done, and please do it in a timely manner.
That's the intent.
For that reason, I would lean towards not getting too specific about the requirement and be more general in nature, as you phrased it. That would give staff some latitude to maybe consider other things that maybe haven't been considered or at least have that latitude. Do we need to be as specific as what was mentioned previously? Or can we be more simplistic in the condition?
What would be the difficulty for staff if it was more vague? Staff seems comfortable to me with the way the condition is worded.
I think to clarify, the item of discussion is the trigger, correct? The timing mechanism. So if the commission does not add a condition on timing, we would work with the applicant, we would, there'd be a lot of internal conversations about what state law outlines as a potential trigger mechanism, if anything. And then it becomes our city attorney's office very much weighing in heavily on when that's applicable. If the commission wants to set a timeframe of when the applicant will act on certain facets, such as just providing the base information, and then, in the event it qualifies, providing additional information, the vagueness is left to the city attorney's office already on what it is they need to provide, because as stated, this is one of the first projects getting to this point under this new Senate bill's requirements. And so we are navigating this for the first time, and we do, we'll need to vet that and flesh that out internally. So I think it's at the discretion of the commission on whether they would like to just provide a very general comment or, excuse me, condition regarding prior to demolition issuance, you'll comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 330 to the satisfaction of the city attorney's office and housing division? Or being a little bit more specific on the metrics, just it's up to you all?
To me, it just makes sense that they have to provide this before they can get a demolition permit. It's just, to me, it's just common sense. And I think the motion, as I presented, is fair. So I'm not going to change my motion. If you choose to vote against the motion, that's your pro op.
Any more discussion? We have a motion on the floor by the vice chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's have a vote.
Vice Chair Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarron?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
Commissioner Corral?
Yes.
Vote is 6-0 to approve.
All right. Thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and move on to current business, which was the planning commission bylaws. I think this was something that was brought up by Commissioner Jester. Unfortunately, he's not here this evening to discuss this item. We would like, with the permission of the rest of the commissioners, to push this to the next, to the next meeting. Do we need to make a motion on that, to move that?
I think you can do it with the concurrence of the city planner without a motion.
With the concurrence of the city planner?
Yes. So the next regularly scheduled meeting, however, would be June 11th.
June 11th?
It would be continued to the June 11th meeting.
Okay. Meeting May 28th?
It gets ahead of the city planner's report, where we'll discuss that, but yes.
All right. Any future agenda items that anybody would like to have? Any of the commissioners? And then any other oral communications? I think none. Planning commissioners report. Anybody have any reform? No. City planner?
Yes. So as I just stated, we will not be having a meeting on 5/28. I know that we had discussed quorum. However, given the fact that I will be out of the office during that date and current staffing levels, June 11th is the most, is the next scheduled meeting, and it's going to have both public hearing items and current business items. That meeting, I will also not be in the office for, so. But it provides for additional buffers for staff, given that staff typically handle this process present. So with that, you can expect a public hearing item on a single-room occupancy hotel conversion. You can expect potentially a hazardous waste transfer facility to be at that meeting. Both of these would be conditional use permits. And then design review for a prior density bonus project, the Conway and Ash Development Projects. This is current business item that will be at that meeting, the June 11th meeting. And then we do anticipate there will be a second meeting in June. It will be quite packed full of policy work. So there would be a public hearing item on a general plan amendment initiated at the staff level as consistency cleanup with the East Valley specific plan. And then we anticipate having the general plan annual progress report, climate action plan annual progress report, and an informational item for you all on the pre-approved accessory dwelling unit program that the planning division is currently working on with a consultant team that would allow for pre-approved floor plans and architectural designs for certain accessory dwelling unit types within the city. So that will be coming before the commission for some input and feedback.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Good discussion tonight. You know, it was nice that everybody got questions in, comments in. We had a good discussion amongst all of us, and so it's always much appreciated. So, good job, planning commission. With that, meeting adjourned.